What kind of public comment?
I've got six thirty, but I always need more. Good stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag, but in the states of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and to the people for all. Uh, Commissioner Haley, if you would read our South City Mission Statement. Alright, thank you. And Commissioner Haley, you read our mission statement.
South City is a safe, prosperous, vibrant community with diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
Thank you. Uh, we have any adjustments to the agenda? Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yeah, we're sorry, we're, we're trying, I, I texted you, um, could you, could you see if you could call them? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
We, we have no adjustments, sir.
There are no adjustments. Alright, motion to approve. Motion to second, all those in favor of seeing my last thing, aye. Passes. Consent agenda.
I'm making motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Here. Now, uh, at this point, uh, we have an organizational meeting where we do the swearing in. The sense of judge isn't here, waiting on the judge. Uh, can we go on to, uh, can we go on to public comment, or it's what will happen to get out of work? Yeah, that way we won't be waiting, I'd be okay.
Yes. Not taking any action, so that's our fault.
Yeah. Alright. Open the comment. Uh. Yeah, one person signed up to speak for public comment, Mr. Donald Matthews. He was in the state of Florida, sticking a name and address.
Donald Matthews, not only, I'm twister, excuse me. Not only now, I was here. Oh, man, well, damn board, uh, for damn, here we are. Coming back. Sixty months, that is flooding and the river is flooded. It is yet to address a vision distinct and male. I mean, usually, the vision is really real. This board, for time it necessary, to address the citizens' concerns in the past eighteen months. You know? See, the stores are open, the law is. This is true, but there may be more. We were told. It's been a crazy election. That's why we do this, and people. This position. It's time for the people of South City to stand up and stand up for what is right. And I'm depending on this board, this duly elected board, to do just that. When a issue comes before you, we expect you to address it. We don't come here just because. And we have talked about these issues for quite some time, and nothing has been done. With that being said, I hope you all are successful and go with God's will. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Alright. See, there's no one else that signs up to speak, sir. I'll close out the public comment. Okay? Is he good too? Oh, he's putting on the regal robe. Well, we'll wait on him at this point. If that's okay with him.
There's a couple more seats in here.
While we have a break in action here, uh, just like to say thank you for everyone that has come out today. We've got a little bit larger crowd than we normally have. Thank you for your interest and your participation, and, uh, we appreciate it. It'd be nice if we had this many folks show up at every meeting, so we could hear what was going on there. We were just waiting on you, sir.
Oh, wow. I had a travel, I had a travel from Hillsborough today, so I apologize for being so late, but, uh, congratulations to you public officials. Had some contested elections, had some hard run. Congratulations on the people who have spoken S X A. And you are here, so we're ready for you to continue your civic duty. Sir, the people of, uh, South City. Great things gonna happen in South City for along with your family. Do we have a oath in which we're going to administer?
Yes.
Definitely here, Bill.
Yes.
Mayor, would you like to be the first to start it?
You're in charge, whatever you say, okay.
Well, how about you, you have any family here with you today, anyone you'd like to come up and hold the Bible?
Absolutely. Mom?
Yes.
You made it? We'll get up here.
Very simple instruction, come on up, you can be part process. I will have you hold the Bible. Yes, ma'am, bring it up. Mayor, if you come on out here, right here. Favorite ones, like that?
From home.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Hold it full. You have holding square, you have holding. You know, this, you almost switch over. There we go. Back. How she do it? Okay, you ready, Mike?
I'm ready.
Okay. Just repeat after me, sir. I, Thomas K. Price the third.
I, Thomas K. Price the third.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will well and truly.
I will well and truly.
Execute the duties of the office.
Execute the duties of the office.
Of com- Of com- that's the commission.
There you go.
The duties to office of mayor as appointed by North Carolina General Statute one sixty eight, sixty seven.
Execute the office of mayor is then.
The office of mayor of the town of South City.
Office of the mayor of South City.
As appointed to me.
As appointed to me.
In the North Carolina General Statute.
In the North Carolina General Statute.
One sixty eight.
One sixty eight.
That's sixty seven.
That's sixty seven.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities which are.
And authorities which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
With my knowledge and ability.
With my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And now the mayor of South City. And we have Commissioner Austin. Hi, Mr. Austin, good to see you today, sir. Yes, sir, good to see you. I have Miss Booth. Then I have Luz. Then I have Miss Brett. Okay. Mr. Austin, do you have any family members with you today?
Yeah, well, I.
Okay. Would you like your wife to come up and hold the Bible?
Yeah.
Mr. Austin, if you come on up. And just follow, silly, if you would just step around right here in front of me, I'm gonna hand you the Bible. Mr. Austin, if you just put your left hand and raise it up. Left, raise it right. Follow instructions well, too. Alright. We're gonna go slow, it's fair, it's fair process. Side in the head. Alright, so, repeat after me. I, Albert Austin.
Hi, Albert.
Do solemnly and sincerely. Swear that I will well. And truly execute. The duties of the office. Of commissioner of, for the town of South City. As appointed to me. In North Carolina General Statute. One sixty eight. That's sixty seven. I will support the Constitution. And laws of the United States. That I will be faithful. And bear true allegiance. To the state of North Carolina. And to the constitutional powers. And authorities which are. Or may be established. For the government thereof. And then I will endeavor. To support. Maintain. And defend. The Constitution of North Carolina. Not inconsistent. With the Constitution of the United States. To the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God. Congratulations, sir. Roll it down, man. Have any family members? How you doing, Dan? Well, good to see. Get a strong hand, strong hand, there, get a strong handshake. Okay. I, Norman Lou.
I, Norman Lou.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear. That I will well.
That I will well.
And truly execute. The duties of the office. Of commissioner for the town of South City.
Of commissioner for the town of South City.
As appointed to me. In North Carolina General Statute. One sixty eight. Sixty seven. I will support the Constitution. And laws of the United States. That I will be faithful. And bear true allegiance. To the state of North Carolina. And to the constitutional powers. And authorities. Which are. Or may be established. For the government thereof. And that I will endeavor. To support. Maintain. And defend. The Constitution of North Carolina. Not inconsistent. With the Constitution of the United States. To the best of my knowledge. And ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Oh, got some old students there, Mr. Bailey, you wanna come on out? We might get you a little sister to hold the Bible there, you step over here to my right. Come on here, Laura, your pastor, help us out. Y'all switch, y'all switch sides, switch sides, there we go. Alright, put your left raise right. Ready? Good? Alright, here we go. I, Louis Bailey. Do solemnly and sincerely. Swear that I will. Well and truly. Execute the duties of. The office of commissioner for the town of South City. As appointed to me. In North Carolina General Statute. One sixty eight. Sixty seven. I will support the Constitution. And laws of the United States. That I will be faithful. And bear true allegiance. To the state of North Carolina. And to the constitutional powers. And authorities which are. Or may be established. For the government thereof. That I will endeavor. To support. Maintain. And defend. The Constitution of North Carolina. Not inconsistent. With the Constitution of the United States. To the best of my knowledge. And ability. So help me God. Yeah. Hang up here, who ever's walking up? That was it, now, man? How you doing, bro? Good. Looking good. Raise your right. Tell me when you're ready to run. Go slow, right? I, Sidney Bright. Do solemnly. And sincerely. Swear. That I will. Well and truly. Execute the duties. Of the office. Of commissioner. For the town of South City. As appointed to me. In the North Carolina General Statute. One sixty eight. Sixty seven. I will support the Constitution. And laws of the United States. That I will be faithful. And bear true allegiance. To the state of North Carolina. And to the constitutional powers. And authorities. Which are. Or may be. Established for the government. Thereup. And that I will endeavor. To support. Maintain. And defend. The Constitution of North Carolina. Not inconsistent. With the Constitution of the United States. To the best of my knowledge. And ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Alright, I believe, is, I believe that's it, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, do those.
Yeah, he will do that oath after, after y'all do. The other part, yeah, yeah, if you hang out for like two minutes.
Alrighty. At this point, uh, we're gonna open up the floor to the committee for the appointments, mayor pro tem. Uh, we have a motion in seconds. And second. Alright, all those in favor of shaking five, I think, aye. All those opposed, like sign. And the motion carries, you'll use the mayor pro tems, so now you get the floor.
I, Bill Haggis.
I, Bill Haggis.
Do solemnly. And sincerely swear. That I will well. And truly execute. The duties of. The office of. Mayor pro tem. For the town of South City. As appointed to me. In North Carolina General Statute. One sixty eight. I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. That I will be faithful. And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance. To the state of North Carolina. And to the constitutional powers. And authorities which are. Or may be. Established. For the government thereof. And that I will endeavor. To support. Maintain. And defend. The Constitution of said state. Not inconsistent. With the Constitution of the United States. To the best of my knowledge. And ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
No, we appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule to come down here. And get us all scoring, get us all on the right foot.
Well, I'm excited. It's a, it's a pleasure. I just want to congratulate each of you once again. On your election, and I'm excited about your service for the Town of South City. I feel like I know a lot of you and have known you for many years, and I feel very comfortable. The town is in really, really good hands. So I'm excited for what you're going to. Because the, the future's bright. Future's bright. Chatham County's got a big future. And you're part of it. You're gonna help us get there. I came here, I'm gonna say this shortly, and y'all may remember this, I came here in nineteen eighty-nine. You don't remember. And we were the quote-quote industrial west. We had probably about twenty manufacturing plants. The city was prosperous, money was flowing, people had money to spend. Kids were staying home working, they were being here in this town. And it was going well. And I came all the way from Georgia. To be part of. And so I feel that same energy coming. We just gotta keep our hope. And the last thing I'll say is I'm in the court system a lot. And I see what's happening to families and people a lot. And what I'm telling you. Is that united. We will stand. If we're not, we will fall. And what I mean is, we got to love one another. Right? No matter race. No matter about your race. No matter about your gender. No matter about your orientation. The key is to love one another. And if we do that. And we stay united for a common goal for all people. Then we will win. South City will win. Your community will win. Your teachers, your children. We all will win. Because by the time it gets to me. The wheels are rolling off. All right? So I wanna make sure that we help folks. But I wanna make sure I feel these folks have y'all's interest at heart. And I'm excited to see what's gonna happen. But I wish, I just give y'all those few words and to say that I love this town too. And I'm so excited for what can happen. And the last thing is, don't forget I'm your judge. How about nineteen seventy-five? So, I want y'all to know this, and I'll. But I want y'all to know this, is that I'm here for you. So, if there's things in the system. That are of a concern. Now you can't call me and ask me to get your cousin out of jail. Can't do that. Say, I got cousin Joe, why don't you get him out? I can't, no, no. If you have a problem with the way the system works. Then I need to know. Because that's when I can call to people. That will get it fixed. So I'm here for y'all. So, anyway. Congratulations once again. Thank y'all for allowing me the honor.
Thank you, we won't do. Probably not. But anybody, we'll take a few minutes, say ten minutes, so. Anybody won't take any pictures of different things, go ahead and do that now. And then we can, we can go on without me. So, thanks about ten.
Channel three for everybody.
Yeah. Well, that'd be.
Yeah, I got them.
Anytime y'all need me, I'll be here. I'll be here for you.
All right, thank you so much, sir. Okay. No, I just. We got it before I finish. You got it thirty minutes ago.
All right. I did a pretty full. That is backed up.
Yeah, you're ready.
Yeah. Now, we're ready. Thank you. All right. Next thing up on our agenda is, uh. We need to start discussing the vacancy of the other at-large. Position been vacated. And if you look on page twenty-two back where it starts. We need to have a discussion about that, uh.
He stepped out of red, maybe to the restroom.
Well-written model. Oh. There it is. We're starting to do that. So, uh. Yes, do you remember?
I think we did a month, and we put it in the paper. We put it in the paper with the district map. I mean, this one would be at-large, but. But, and we paid to advertise it on W N C A, and we put a block ad in the Chatham News. And then we sent it out to our different listservs. The, the last two times, we did that same thing, I wanna say.
And as far as the time frame, for the first meeting in the next month, that'd be.
Well, if we, well, if we do it. Yeah, we won't have a meeting the first time, we'll have a meeting the second meeting. Yeah, we could have that sort of, the week, the week prior, so we could get all the applicants that are interested. Yeah, there was two rounds of interviews. Yeah. Yeah.
So, what's the consensus of the board to. Have a period of thirty days to. People submit their interest in that seat. And then the second meeting of July. Only again for that. Is that the general, is that the consensus?
So now, are we doing the interviews that night, or are we, are we discussing the interview? Because I know, when, when I, when I went through it, it was, it was a separate session, a special call meeting, but.
I think we went over. The rest things, and then. Shows some for interviews.
How you gonna do it?
And same, we're just gonna follow the same procedure we did the last two times.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So, clarify that for Jennifer.
I mean, if y'all are flexible, I can, I can do the thirty-day deadline and. You know, and that way we get it in the paper and stuff, and we get.
Well, the, the July fourth is that Monday, so our next meeting will be the eighteenth. So you could, you could, you could have, but by Monday, the eleventh. The eleventh, about five o'clock, and then that could be in our meeting pack for the eighteen.
Um, it should. It should, and I mean, well, we usually do, for stuff like this, we do two o'clock. Just as a time, but, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure we do it for thirty days.
Exactly, that, okay, with both. Okay, you got what you need, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manick. Got what you need?
Yes, sir.
Been mighty quiet so far. We'll make sure you include.
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll, we'll go with that. All right. Next on the agenda. Is the advisor board appointment, start on page twenty-seven. You wanna lead us to them, Mr. Mayor? I mean. Sorry.
We've got. Free board appointments that we. The one vacancy that we have. The A B C board. You have a few names there for your consideration included on. On respect page twenty-seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nominate.
I'll, I'll make, I'd like to make a motion that, I mean, looking at Gary Reeves. With the, with the thirty years about A B C industry and, and. He would make a, I think a good addition, so I'd like to make a motion with Gary Reeves, the A B C board. He would make a, um, I think a good addition, so I'd like to make a motion with Gary Reeves to the A B C board.
We have the motion in a second. In discussion. All right. Say what we, we don't think you, none of them. All right, all those in favor, take five, say aye. All right, all of it says like sign. There is none. And that was taken care of. Next, Mr. Manager.
Next is the way the airport authority board, this is page thirty-one. Uh, you have one individual whose term has expired and is a senior candidate who's expressed interest in being appointed to a second term. And it's the only vacancy.
Get motion, we report the gentleman for his second term and start to airport store.
For most of the second, in discussion. All ages, if they're taking five, I'll say aye. All those, both like sign. And the motion carries.
Next up is the downtown advisory committee. Uh, on the next page, page thirty-two, you have two vacancies on that as well as, uh, two interested parties, Mr. John Barnesworth. And also Tammy Renee Glover with supporting materials, page thirty-three and thirty-four.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we reappoint the red activities of the downtown advisory, uh, committee for a three-year term. We also appoint John Barnesworth and Tammy Renee Glover as, as two additional candidates.
Got most, second, in discussion. Yep, some, you, yeah, you. Although you look like you're getting rid of something. How do you? Okay. All right, you, you know, further discussion. All of the big, favorite, take five, I'll say aye. All of the opposed, like sign. And the motion carries.
And next on page thirty-five is the immigrant advisory committee appointments. Uh, some of these individuals are in partial terms due to this being a newly created committee. So the, before you was, uh, requested action to reappoint, um, Mr. De Nubio, uh, Vasquez Rodriguez. And Shirley Villatora for a full year term of three years until expire June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
That motion we appoint Vasquez Rodriguez and Shirley Villatora for a full three-year term. We will project to expire June thirty, four, five, ten.
Motion, we have a second, we're beginning discussion. Not all of the favors say aye. All of the opposed like so. And the motion carries.
For the park recreation advisory, uh, committee, we have two individuals who's terms expired June thirtieth that are seeking reappointment. For a three-year term to June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Lou, uh, Giapico and Tim Stone.
Look, that we will reappoint to Giapico and Tim Stone to park recreation advisory committee for that term. Which is higher than thirty.
We have a motion, we have a second, we're beginning discussions. If not, all those in favor, take five, I'll say yes. All right, I think. Yeah, either one. Saying that, all those both like so. And the motion carries.
Okay, for the planning board, um, different things happening. We have three vacancies currently, including one of them being the E T J position. Uh, you have, uh, one, um, one E T J position with three candidates for that position. And then you have, um, Mr. Randall Parks who's seeking for a third term to be reappointed. And also requested, uh, uh, appointment of Dennis Brooks as an E T J member.
He wasn't being supported.
I'll make a motion to. Wants to be E T J member. Then you go work for it, three-year term. This will explain at the end, very. Motion, we have a second, we need discussion. Not all those in favor say aye. All those opposed like so. And motion carries.
And it looks as soon as. Time for the first term to expire June thirty.
I'll second you. Well, we have a motion, we have a second, we need discussion. Not all those in favor say aye. All of the opposed like sign. Then motion carries. All right.
You have three options, one of them, Mr. Billy Jordan is ineligible for courtesy, not in his jurisdiction, so he really told two choices.
I'll make a recommendation. We can't do anything about it. Uh, the two that we can make, uh. Something out of, uh, Mr. John Dameron has served on the planning board in years past, they have some experience there, so. We have a motion, a second, discussion. Uh, all of the favorites, I'll say aye. All of the opposed like sign. Motion carries. All right, let's make care of all the comments. Next on the, uh, agenda is the suggested rule procedures for the board committee. And that's on page forty-one. So it's just for, uh, let me give a little bit of prep here. Uh. About thirty days ago, looked into this to, uh, see exactly how our board was governed. And what we found out, what we determined was nothing had ever been done, ever, ever. Yeah, I think like I was under the assumption, like all the rest of the board members, that, uh, we were operating under the Robert rule, borders, but nothing had been officially adopted. So, uh, I spoke with our attorney and, uh, the manager and asked what other. Towns our size did and different things. And, uh, Mr. Maury came up with something, so at this point. Uh, you want to expand on what's already in here, what we see is, or anybody had any questions, cause you're the expert on it, uh.
Well, I, I said, or I brought it down with me, that was Jack, the mayor. Um, a publication, excuse me, from U N C school of government. It's called a, uh, suggested, suggested rules of procedure for a small town, I think it's something to that effect. It was written by Professor Fleming Bell, longtime professor at the school of government, is now retired, but, um, and. It's, it is, it's based on Robert's rules, but it's just a, hits the, the most important things that come up. Uh, that are likely to come up, and I think what you have before you is actually some of that. Um. A, and Jennifer, did you put this document together?
Yes, sir.
You sent it to me, I've reviewed it, I think it's fine, and it's got a provision in there that where. Something isn't addressed in these rule, suggested rules of procedure that we would look to, um. Uh. Robert's rules. Uh, Robert's rules revised or something like that. Yeah, most current version.
We look to Robert's rule or, or suggest rules of procedure. It's not addressing.
So this is a more condensed document than the little pamphlet I sent, I sent to you, but it, it contains all the most important items that. Are likely to come up at one point or another, uh, and it's, uh. It's, it's really well done, I think, so. If you've read, have any questions about any particular provision, I'll, I'll answer them.
I, I can fairly determine, uh, it, it incorporates the major themes of the suggested rules, uh, from the school of government. Uh, while also being condensed enough that it's easy to follow, easy to read, and that's the most important thing, and any procedure guy for a board is that it's able to. Interpret and understand, actually be able to follow it. I, I think it, it checks all the boxes.
The only, the only question I had was, you know, I, I know that there's specific date, days of the week and times of the day. Where things are due to the clerk or for things for inclusion. Are we good, are, are we good with those or are those things that we, you know, are there more guidelines than rule?
It, it's always been a guideline, you know, and, and, you know, it has to be. We, we, we try as much as we can with the S A F port to be a rule, but I think in the manager's office, we have to use some discretion when absolutely necessary.
Yep. Yeah, I just don't, I just don't wanna get into it in the situation where a citizen brings something that, you know, hey, you know, it's, it's, it was due by three o'clock on Tuesday, well, it's now three oh five, and sorry, we can't do that. But I just wanna make sure that it's flexible.
Right, that, well, right, there's a difference between staff being partying, submitting something they've been warned about and, you know, a, a necessary item that doesn't need to wait until a further board meeting.
Yeah, and that was, those are the only questions, I, it looked pretty concise.
The structure, the structure is. It's, it's the.
You're exactly right with Lou, that's. Really just formalized as sort of what we were doing, it had never been done, even. Played one way back, we never found anything, so you're exactly right.
And, and you've never had a guide before, so you get into it and find it was a problem with something, you can change. But it's not, it's not black and white, you have ability to make a.
Any other, any other questions to the board or anything? What's the feelings of the board? I think we just require a motion. Yes, voted on, sir? Yes. What's the pleasure of the vote?
I'm making motion. Kind of sound of city. Carolina. Backed it. I told him to. I have six. What is it, about forty-two point eight?
Could we reference the? Full volume of this in that motion, cause like what we got is against version. To mention the name of that, you know.
I don't think it's necessary, it, it'll be in the minutes from what, from my comments.
And also referencing.
Okay.
And this is probably something that'll be reformatted and, and you guys will sign it, so that it's official in the minutes.
So we have a. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion about this? Not with good, with all of the favors say aye. All of the opposed like sign. Motion carries. Okay. Old business. City Hall building renovation. So. All right, Mr. Manager.
I, I think before we get into discussing at the offices, we have Mr. Hobbs here and we also have Mr. Ellington. Available for questions over, over Zoom, uh, maybe if we address that part first, and then I can get into the office. In case y'all have any questions. Um, you have available, we, uh, complete the schedule, there is a separate handout. That's the most recent field report, it's number twenty-six on this project. Um, I'm sure it's been a while since you got the details detailed update, and I ask. Two gentlemen to depress and invite and be able to answer any questions, cause this is a, a project that was supposed to be done several months ago, and I, I'm sure there's a lot of unanswered questions out there and. You know, the respective parties are here to be able to address those.
Want to go first, Louis?
The progress of this name. I want to know what they, but. Over. But I, so. And, uh, are we on?
Have the furthest questions to Mr. Hobbs and Mr. Ellington.
Yeah, just if you would, take your name and address for the official record, please.
Uh, Taylor Hobbs. I was like effects, one oh nine Carroll, Craig Pittsburgh. Nice to be with you all tonight, it's been a while. You know, the, uh, recently, uh. That showed up mostly in the basement. Little bit of conundrum, we couldn't figure out there was a decent amount of water down there, and if you've seen the work around the building. We, we've actually increased the impervious surface in some of the areas that we were large and see that is now the sidewalk, so a little bit. But figure what went on to, uh, Isaac and his father, they saw in that heavy rain a couple of Friday. Water was sheeting off the roof over the gutters, there was so much water bypassing the gutters, and then also at, at times. It was, uh, filling the gutters, and we think that. Gutters were full and they have a way. To actually water get in behind them, onto that wood socket and run back and get into the wall cavity itself. And run all the way down, cause there was water squirting into the basement or strained.
Was coming out of the, part of the granite wall. Like place.
It was, and we think, the best we can, you see the field report, is the best I can, that's better description, but we think the water was inside the wall. And that ended, went all the way down to the basement and coming in, so.
So two questions, the, the original, we thought was coming from the ground level, which was on the side where the. Kind of abandoned used park. We thought the water was coming and watching across there, has that been?
We, we think it has, we've got a new sidewalk that's sloughed away from the building.
It's new that we found, the water is flowing inside the wall and somehow jamming out from the wall in the basement. Is there?
I don't think that's, my, I don't think that's a new, I think that's probably been a problem a long.
Well, I said the one you just found.
But I think it's been doing that.
Which gets my, my concern. If it's been doing that a long time, so long, that the water has created a channel inside the wall down to the base. Is the structural integrity of the supporting wall compromised? When the structural engineer kind of look at it?
I don't, I don't think so, I think that, that, that building is so well-built, there's, there's typically cavities in walls and water's not gonna hurt stone. Um, I think the real issue is, if you look, they're kind of residential style gutters up there, they might even be four inch, four inch gutters. For that large amount of, I really think the solution is reworking those gutters, getting larger gutters and bigger, bigger and more downsells to. Handle that.
We've got a problem with the hole that is still moving. Since flowing back behind the, in the hole and going down through the wall.
I would, I would, I think if you get a larger gutter and can handle that volume of water and get it downsells, it will never get back into that wall.
But if we're having to tell the others to replace it. Why can't we just? Why can't we, why can't we just call the whole over there?
If, if, if it's apparent that there's a hole there, we certainly, it's just till you get in there.
And you don't think we need, you need to have a backfill for the channel going down through the wall?
Um, I, 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 I wouldn't be against that, I, I just, you have to just see what you have when it, when you get out there, when you get out there.
So what are you thinking, I'm going to request the driver to hold building or just that one section?
But I think the main, the main issue that I'm seeing. Shows up in the basement on one side. So you could just. Do one side. I don't, I don't, I, we have one on the project.
Okay.
So we, yeah, we we have, and so I can talk to her, but I don't, I don't think. That wall's coming. And I'm here, do you, do you agree with that? It's my father. I don't think.
Right. And what's something we'll add to the products?
Well, I think, and Chris might speak to this. McCray Roofings worked with town for a long time. They did the. Most recent work whenever it was done. I think that that might be done under a separate. Contract with McCray. So I don't know that it would add to this project. So that it would add the function, but I don't know that it will fall under this project.
So it won't become a part of the project?
Well, not if it doesn't come under a change order to this project. It would be the town vendor. You can handle.
I would suggest that we do that separate.
Yeah.
Just for a cost standpoint. And I would replace all the gutters because it is rotten soaps on the other sides of the building. Just right.
So there's that and. We're, we've also are exploring the belt suspenders approach. Put some down in the basement. Just. No, I mean, there's no. I think I feel I have all the confidence that that should solve the problem. Can't guarantee it. Would water ever get down the basement? We'll find out, but we have a. We have Isaac pricing and putting some sumps down there to deal with. You know, you're five feet below, you're in a hole and. It's not uncommon for these problems, but that means when the gutter were, and if you had a couple of something down there. Up any kind of excess water out. I think that's the best.
I have a question. Just hearing you talking about you're going to put bigger gutter. And bigger downsides on there. Yet. The size of the drain down there is still going to remain the same. You're going. You think going to be able to handle? That larger amount of water, you're going to. I already was trying to say, you're going to make that bigger. And you're going to make that bigger.
Well, I think there's a. Isaac, what was the diameter of the pipe you put in the pipe?
Eight inch, yeah. I think it was eight inch.
It was, if you go over there and look, these end look, they go.
And that's fine. That picture, that's. The water flow ain't so much going to go through the pipe, whatever side it is up here.
And I would say we might add, add another town.
Okay. But you think there's adequate? The drains down in the ground adequate to handle the bigger gutter?
I do, and if it's not, we could, we could actually. Just put a splash box, splash box on one of them, the surface drain. So we've got. But I do think if it's big enough, if it's done a big rain proves that it's not, we can just surface drain one of them so that.
So where are we then on? Finalizing projects?
Isaac, if you want to speak to that, I've got your most recent schedule. It is your schedule. You might want to think of where we are with that.
What? I couldn't understand the question.
The the schedule of the project.
Uh. There's a. Minor amount of HVAC work still to take place upstairs, first, second floor. Pretty much that's the main thing. We're waiting on those two floors and there's a few things to tie in here and there, like, you know, a day of tile. Some rubber cover base here and then the. Bookshelf in the one office, but downstairs. Is in phase two is still have the majority of the HVAC work down there. And there is a little bit of plumbing work down there, which is only. Moving the existing. Water line coming into the building. And then there's some minor electrical items down there. But the heating air guys have been there. The majority of the days, the past week or so, I think, Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But the majority of the work that's remaining is heating and air. And. They've been on site, like I said, and they told me they plan to continue to be on site until they finish.
This this current schedule that you sent me today. If everything goes by its plan, he's got final inspections. For July eighteenth. Is that correct, Isaac?
Yes.
And the project is showing what recent payout were about seventy percent.
I want to ask a question. And I don't know what. Where. And we're, how far behind are we on the project already? What was their rating on February twelve, February the twelfth? And we're behind. So, and I know there's a lot of things, but what has concerned me the most is I've gone up there on so different occasions. And then nobody working anywhere. So. Somebody, can somebody explain that?
I'd be much nicer. I've been here.
I know.
Uh, well, Bob, I had this conversation with Bill at one of the meetings. Uh, there for a while, we were waiting, certain things were waiting on materials. As for instance, the flooring was ordered. Think the end of last year sometime and we didn't get it until April or whenever it was that they installed it. There was a. I can't remember. I know that he never, we had a heat and air problem at the beginning of the project. Put us behind some on that. I mean, there's just been a variety of of things that's affected this this project. Is we now, we're, I mean, majority of days the past couple of months, there's been people there working. But there for a while, you are correct. There was, you know, several days, you know, there wouldn't be anybody there.
Little not accepted. It took a long time to get acceptable. Little approved. Once it was approved. A lot of the work. That was a sequencing thing until that work for the HVAC system. Start, other work had to wait. I think that's one thing Isaac's trying to say. And so.
Question, so when you say that it was, it's a middle was rejected, rejected by whom?
Our engine.
Why was it?
They had not made. What was specified. Didn't get ordered, that's admitted. That's and. Took quite a while to get. The right system. Ask us a question for the contractor. We were just, we were waiting on it.
How does it take a while to resubmit? Resubmit that when you know of what it's supposed to be, number one. I wasn't done like the first time. Number two. Why did it take so long to have to redo what should have been done like the first time?
Well, I had to find a different sub because my sub that I rely on, who I've used in the past on several jobs. Did not price or price the the right equipment for this project and. That was not realized until we sent in the submittals. So once that was rejected, we noticed that it was not the correct. Equipment to use for this project. So I had to find a different sub. And that took a couple of months to. I knew one reach out to, but I had to get them in the project, get them drawings, get them to get a price, get them to get some middles. But I mean, the. Main thing is the original sub that I've used. Did not price the correct equipment.
All due respect, that's not a good answer. Not satisfactory answer. Because as a general, you're in charge of the project and you have knowledge of what the requirements are supposed to be. As to who your sub is. This manager, was there a time of essence calling the contract?
That I'm not aware of. I reviewed the contract tonight.
There was a date set. I mean, it was an end date. Uh, I mean, a completion by date. And there was also a, 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 why, I'm fairly sure it's a long time since I read it, that there was a liquidated damages clause in it. That's what you're asking.
There's been some days added through changes. I mean, the town is one of the adding. I believe we've added. Around fifty days to the contract. But we're. More than fifty days.
But we have any. The addition to being in. Way behind them. Are we, are we on our own costs? We're looking at as far as where the total cost of project that we've set up versus what we originally explained.
And so far, it looks like total costs. And outward contractors and all of the other costs associated. We're at six eighty eight. And we have budgeted. Six hundred and eighty eight thousand. Um, we had. Budgeted. Looks like. Originally, it was six fifty seven through budget amendment. We're at seven seventeen. Seven seventeen. Yeah, it was more than that. Um, it looks like we were going to. Probably around two hundred and seventy five thousand.
That's due to a change orders that we made? Was that due to increased material costs due to delays or something?
I just look at the change.
It shouldn't be a very material.
Yeah, I haven't asked for any, any money for increasing material costs. Everything's been requested by architect or. Owner.
Some of the change orders with HVAC. Talking about doing the bathrooms. Has been affected by increased prices, but it's. Without says today's prices that were requested by the county that priced. Some of those change orders. It's reflected on the market that they were at.
That's probably the biggest point. And the elevator, they've done the upgrade. For a big mother change order on this, it's almost seventy thousand itself. For stuff that has to be done in the elevator before we can put it back in service. That we weren't expecting.
One, one concern that I have is that, you know, all this is all really good. But when we as a board ask. You know, what's going on? Give some update. All we got was, you know, vague answers to what was going on and. And evidently the information was not flowing. Back up the change from the contractor, whoever the town manager to the board because. We have asked, I don't know on how many different occasions. What's the status of this? Well, we think we can get it by the end of this month and that was the extent of where we got to. So at this point, it's becoming. Real. Exasperating. You know, the whole process. And now when it's like July the eighteenth. Yeah.
Plus we're looking at, this is the first. Uh, maybe I'm using it, but I don't recall ever. Saying that it was. Going to be pushing a million dollars.
You know. Can you couple that with coming by and and not seeing any activity going on? You can, you can sort of imagine. Thoughts that you have about what's, what's happening. And. As far as I'm concerned. I think it's time for, it's time to have every man on deck and have everybody working on the project. Let's get it done. Because I'm quite frank, I'm tired of fooling you. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm being so frank, but it's time to get on with the project. I agree one hundred percent. Yeah.
Apparently. X amount of money this Sunday. Where, where is that amount?
It ultimately comes out of fund balance. But budget always has to be balanced. So. If there's overrun, that's where it's going to come from. Essentially, you're saying.
Oh, at one time.
Yes, ma'am. Right. I mean, that's a, 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 a question, but the challenge is always, we're, we're, as a town, we're trying to always stay within budget. We always have to plan for long term capital projects. So when you're pulling money out of fund balance, it makes it that much harder. To plan for the long term, plan growth and replacement. Of large capital because you lose the ability to fund those things. It makes it so that things that you could look at pay go for using your own funds. But you don't have the existing funds. You have to go to a bank and borrow more money, which means larger interest payments. So. It. There's kind of a multiplier effect there. You always want to have a healthy fund balance because it gives you the maximum leverage. When it comes to expending your funds.
So what, where do we go from here? What, what's the plan? What, what can we expect? I mean. What do we do?
He's got, he's got, he's got a, a project schedule.
Yeah. Are we going to stick to that?
It's really, that's. I hope we do. There's really a contract question.
Can we have a, can we have a project schedule made a part of the minutes, please?
And something I'd like to add to that. If this, this case, I think the contractor ought to give a weekly or some. On some regular basis, what the status of the project is. To town staff or the town managers. So we can be better informed about what's going on because that's, that's been a very frustrating point for, I think, for everybody. Is it's just sort of been out there and just been in limbo. Nobody can give us an answer.
And I think, and, and I'm, I'm. People are not here to, you know, answer themselves, but I, I believe that the previous administration, two town managers. Did not provide the requisite information to us, even though we've been asking for it. So I'm going to, I'm going to lay blame on, on, you know, those individuals.
One easy thing that we might be able to, we're, we're making weekly or five weekend site visits with field reports. They have a standing monthly meeting of minutes. What you see here, one of these every week and sometimes two. Want to be added to the distribution list. That is the, that is the current information as of Friday. For what, where we are, what's outstanding, what needs to happen.
This gets back to my, this gets back to my point. These, these exist.
I produce those.
These were never made available by landlord, by town manager.
Just went to the town.
It goes to the town administration and all the people involved on a daily basis.
How many, can I just ask, how many field reports? This is number twenty six and it's the first one I'm. Seeing. How many of those have been made available to the?
None, we say zero.
And on top of those, there's however, there's a monthly meeting minutes for however many months. There's one, one monthly. Month on top of those that we, there's, so there's, I don't, I don't know since. However many that are. But we diligently.
Oh, yeah, we, we, I don't, I don't doubt that you, you and the contractor are on top of this. It's just this, this, the frustration point is that this didn't get to us. Not your fault.
What's the anticipated time frame on final inspection that you showed?
I don't know. I would say probably just it's final inspection that July eighteenth that that happens. Let's say August one, maybe. August one, August, late July, early August. That, that's the current. Plan, according to Mr. Ellington. Let's say, August one, maybe, August, August one, August, late July, early August, that, that's the current plan, reporting to Mr. Ellington. It's just, it's a matter of the contract is finishing it out, and that's where we're at.
This is a question for the Mr. Ellington, how confident are you that the July eighteenth date is a good drop dead date?
Uh, I'm, well, pretty confident, I'm, I'm gonna try to do everything that I can to make that happen. The one, the only thing that I do not have a hundred percent confidence in or knowledge of is. If we are to do the bathroom, uh, heating and air, as long as that equipment is still in stock, when that approval for the change order comes through. Then I feel pretty confident, but if it isn't, then they have to, it's gonna take to get that equipment. But as of last week, that equipment was still in stock.
You know, have the.
There's been requests to add HVAC in areas, then a proposed change order delivered to the town. Not as approval or disagreeing on it, but as soon as it's approved, I was.
Just if, if, if for some reasons that the equipment is not available or, or whatever. Can we close off those bathrooms and, no? Yeah, well, we, oh, because what hit me, my, my point is, can we, you know, can we just not, you know, have that, have those areas open? We, you know, get them done, and so we can get everything else complete.
It's a fun building.
I mean, they're not required, there's no, there's no requirement, it's a preference to do that, they're not required to have that. Um, it wasn't the original design, it's just exhaust, and the idea of the air, because it's a non-use, that you're just there for a second. But, so we, we don't have to do it as a preference.
The HVAC or the bathroom itself?
HVAC.
Yeah, that's.
The bathroom.
No, 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 I'm saying have a bathroom, but can we just close them off temporarily while if, if, if it's taking too long to get the material? Can we just finish everything else, hold up on the bathroom till it is, and complete all the rest of the work?
I think the bathrooms are basic, I mean, I think they're all, they're, they'll be, once they have partitions, put fixtures in, they'll be, I think you could use those until that equipment came in. And then go do the work, there's these, there's these cassettes, it's not, it's, these are ductless things, so you.
Oh, so it's like, yeah.
It's not very split, you should go over there and look, they're, they're interesting, the thing, they sit into a ceiling grid, they're two, they're two by twos, and. But you have to take the ceiling down and do that work.
Yeah, but, yeah, but I, I, I would not want that limiting, uh, as a limiting factor.
As long as you have a project. Well, right now, the building's operating on one. Which.
And town staff would rather have the toilet than the HVAC.
My point being is, you know, if it's been too long, then you just still get everything up, and then once it comes in, back to the. Close it off for a day or two and get the.
It's probably been more than a day or two.
Or one, or two, yeah.
As long as he gets the copper piping and all that there, Isaac, you might be able to speak better than that. If we did that, what, what kind of downtime to go back and finish would you anticipate?
Uh, I don't, I, I don't see any problem with doing that, I don't understa- I don't know what you mean by, what you're asking about the downtime.
Well, I mean, if, if we open the bathrooms without those cassettes in the ceiling, because you can't get them. If you got them at a later date and then installed them, it's not like you do that in a day, uh, my guess is it would be probably over a week, is that?
Yeah, probably, probably weeks, a week or two, because there's, there's some, uh.
I would, I would much rather get the rest, I mean, if, I would, I don't want those two cassette, or those, those cassettes. To, um, to be the limiting factor on the entire project being completed.
We can, we can, we'll be with that, not seeing.
Other, I mean, some broader questions? Oh, yeah.
I have this question for Mr. Ellington's, it's, it's a frustration for, for everybody in town halls, nothing seems completed. Uh, every building, every room in the building seems to have something undone. Is there any way, some of, at least some of the rooms that the work seems minimal, can that just be wrapped up instead of? You know, every single aspect of the building being under some form of construction? Now, can we, can we lessen the scale of, of the project in that sense?
Um, yes, uh. I know the, the bathrooms can't be done until the exhaust is put in the wall. Uh, same with this other room, so if I get, you know, I was going to go speak with the heating and air guys today, but I wasn't able to get by, so I have to. Try to call them to explain what I need them to do, since I can't make a site visit, but, um. Yeah, I mean, there's, like you said, there's a thing, you know, a few things here and there that's holding up, but yeah, we can do something, we can do that.
Yeah, I think suggesting then, based on what I'm having said, what about, uh, Mr. Ellington? And Mr. Rafer have a meeting as soon as possible and go through every room that you're, that, in your example? And make a punch in this, what needs to be done, both have a copy of it, that way, you know, it can be done, completed, according to how, what, what can you say?
We have punch lists for the overall project, but I think we're at a point we need to talk about prioritization.
Well, that, that's what getting a punch list for your prioritization, to just finish something up rather than having a dozen unfinished projects.
Right.
Absolutely, that, would that be doable?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that you?
Yes, sir.
What about the board?
You know, I don't think. I guess it was possible, extremely frustrating.
Yeah. That's suffice it to say that there's not a lot of tolerance left on the board's patience for this project.
Well, I, I.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. But, it's the same, yeah, let's, let's let, uh, as far as that goes, yes, I could, that's the short answer. And then, but let's let, if, if our town manager, if that's necessary, I would be available. But at this point, they're in there, and they probably know better than I, would that be okay with you? That would be your call.
I think that would be best.
Is that okay? Yeah, yeah, well, and I appreciate that, yeah.
Jennifer, do we have a contract stand?
Yes, I, I have it, I just can't get into the server right this minute, I was gonna pull it up and give it to William, but, but, yes.
I know, I, I was just gonna say, again, that's my frustration, I think had we, had we gotten regular updates, we, we wouldn't be sitting here having this conversation. And I know we, you know, it's, e- everybody is anxious to get this done, um, you know. But I, I just, I think that had we had regular updates, uh, which is not, you know, Ellington or, or Hobbs', um, issue, that's the issue for the administration.
So, we, are we good, this part, everybody good? Isaac, you good?
Yes, sir.
Good. All right. Next part of, I don't, I don't, I'm.
Um, I guess the next, next part of this section is discussing the office arrangement, not, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words, you've got three individuals here to see the layout of the building. I was, I was trying to hit the highlights of each department, as you know, the parks are great, it's been operating out of, um, fit center. Since this project has begun, that has worked really well, um, they seem satisfied, you know, at least until, um, the Bray Park project advances. So, we would recommend that we continue going in that direction and allow them to remain at the fit center. And, and, and that's typical, especially of operational departments, the closer you get them to where they're providing service, uh, I think the more efficient and effective that is. Um, the planning department previously was on the third floor, uh, we're recommending that they move down to the second floor, uh, there's crew staff currently. Uh, and that would change them to, uh, being the former manager suite, uh, like I said, on the second floor. With the number of projects that we have coming with the development that we anticipate. I think we need to really think about the number of people that will be coming in and out of the building, especially with court presuming, and I think the closer you can be. To an entrance to receive service, I think the better off we're going to be, so having the planning department, but then a few steps from the front door. Someone who wants to come in, potentially muddy boots, or be able to get a permit, I think it's most successful plan for, um, the general public. Um, and also makes that closely related to the finance department, then you can make some form of payment. Um, the finance department, um, is most sustained where it is, the, but the finance director would move upstairs to the third floor. Uh, along with where I would be, um, and, and the town clerk, um, reason I'm, I'm proposing that change, uh, is, I guess, multiple. Uh, we've added an assistant finance director position, so we'd have to have a place for that person to go, so that would go where the current finance director's position. I think with all the development that we see coming our way, we need to really start thinking prospectively and being proactive and thinking about the future. And we need to lay out this building and what we expect the town to be, if we expect the town to, to double in size as a result of this growth, we need to lay the building out. Staffing wise, in a way that fits what a town twice our size is going to need. And, and thinking along that strategy, we need to really think more proactively about the way we function with budgeting. Um, budgeting is a twelve-month process when it comes to forecasting, making projections, and when we're getting up to a, now a nineteen point one billion dollar budget. Uh, we really need to make sure we're doing the absolute best we can in planning how those funds are expended. So, I really see the finance director role becoming a lot more functioning than the budget, and as the budget officer for the town by statute, I think that needs to be a priority, why that position needs to be placed. Closer to me on the third floor. Uh, public works would go where the planning department is currently, uh, in the basement, um. There is space for them, for a public works director and a utilities director, as well as supporting, uh, area for an admin assistant, uh, that they currently have. So, what, what's laid out here has been discussed with each of the department heads affected in town hall. Uh, and while we all love to have more space in the building, you know, that would be more conducive for everybody, I think this is a fair. Compromise for all parties and puts us in the best position, the money that we have, to the best use of all of the town office space. And, and, and keep in mind too, the basement also has the potential to add offices in the future. So, while this is a plan, I think it's the best fit for today, uh, it would be my goal down the road to recommend to you that. Ultimately, at some point, public works and utilities may need to be moved out of town hall, closer to where they provide service, because we know we're gonna need. More admin positions, particularly in the planning, uh, department, if we see the growth that we're expecting, to manage that, that administration.
Listen to the board. Yes, I wanna add something to what, what you say.
Yes, sir, it goes.
Okay. Oh. When this first came up, and this is before you ever showed up?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and this deals back on what Bill said earlier, how information was not coming back up the chain to the board commissioner. Uh. There was a whole lot of changing going on with the, with, with the building, it had not been, nothing had been said to anybody, nothing, it just started happening. And, uh. Essentially, what was said was, why don't you put this on hold for a little while till the new town manager gets here, and let him have his feet on the ground? And, uh, that fell on two red big deaf ears. So, uh, anyway, as far as what I'm seeing here, it looks like you have put in work, and, uh. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but it, it looks like it's, it's a doable plan, what we got, and what I like about it is. That you have talked to your people and involve them in what's going on, got their feedback, because that's what happened. Originally, we're always, uh, working to draw up this plan. So, uh, I appreciate you, you doing that, and, uh, I don't know, what, what is the rest, I don't really see anything, just. I don't see a problem here, but I had a real problem with the way it was handled, quite frankly, because I know you, I told you just before, you got thrown under the bus, but. By our previous interim manager.
Three buses.
Yeah, two buses, excuse me.
Same, um. To address the issue of lack of communication on this project, not just from a layout standpoint, but change orders, cost everyone's, everything. I really want to formalize this. This four plan, in a motion and a second vote. To force communication, should some change be necessary, because we haven't had it. And it's extremely frustrating that this, this is the hub of our town. And we get questions, and we can't give the public answers, and sometimes they don't really. You know how bad it is when someone says, hey, I heard done it, done it, go to hotel hall? So, what? Who's supposed to know? And the, the, the lack of information flows, you think. Is extremely concerning, because aren't you, I know, you know that. But it is very, very concerning to the whole project. Cost everyone, the ladies, the whole nine yards, we gotta just create these smiles on our faces, like summer. Pretending we're free and bold, and we have a budget working, we have a plan. All extremely frustrating. I, I think I can stick on that after four, but.
Yeah, no, yeah, absolutely, and, and I think. I mean, I, I'm a, I'm a data guy and, and I'm, you know, project management background, and so I really appreciate having things laid out for me like this, because. You know, understanding the whys and the wherefore's behind decisions is important, not that we have to make all the decisions, which we shouldn't be, however. When we get hit with a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar bill that has to get paid. We need to be the ones that are understanding why, and again, not you, I mean, this, this has nothing to do with you. But going forward, we just want to make sure that we are consulted and informed when things like this occur, because we shouldn't, we shouldn't be sitting here. Carrying about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, gonna have to come out of fund balance. You know, sit four, five, five months after the project was originally slated.
Those, that, those change orders, those two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in change orders didn't have any mystery.
Yes.
Seventeen twenty doors today on this project.
And it doesn't think, we, we tried really hard to put back a capital improvements, and, and we pointed out, it had adverse effects. Other projects that we would like to undertake, and for which now, we can't blame them, because much started to improve. It wasn't like you.
No. And we're, if, if, I want to add something in this, at this point, and go for what Bill just said about the frustration. Mr. Rafer knows exactly how frustrated I was, because he was at the end of a, I apologize. I was so mad that day when I came up there to the town, and there was stuff going on that shouldn't have been going on, it flew all over me. And you, you might have thought you were gonna be able to pick up truckload, you gotta dump truckload, that was my fault. You, you didn't have anything to do with it, but you were the recipient of it at the time, I'm sorry, I should have known better, but it just flew all over me all of a sudden. But I think, I, I'm not trying to justify it, but the frustrations we're talking about, and the other things that you didn't have anything to do with. Uh, it just, it just, all at one time, it relax. Uh, he just, he just, all at one time, if for lack of a better, you got to pass. I'm sorry. So it wasn't your fault. It, it's one thing you did, you inherited it from somewhere. And so, and the reasons, part of the reason, you know, we talked about having a time line. Is, well, we need to clear the air about this and some other stuff. Because in order for you to be successful, we don't need this stuff hanging out. And what Mr. Haggis and Chris Bailey and the rest of them said, you know, let us know what's going on. We, we, we need information. If we have information, we can all work together, but some of this stuff that had happened, it was like. You know.
We can't, we can't move efficiently if the board has to approve each of these change orders and concepts. But there's a difference in consent and, and informing.
And there's an informal email.
That's right.
Yeah.
I, I, I can't control it. I regret the situation we find ourselves in, but I guess my pledge to you is, is. To continue to work effectively for you, but also to do what we can as administration to inform the board. As much as possible, and if there's something going on that you feel is not being passed along, sure, please let us know, because that, that's what we're here for.
Then if you, if you have a communication, then we're not taken by surprise when you all come and say, hey, we, we envision.
Right.
Uh, and we are taken by surprise, that's on us, because we, we are.
All right, so what, what do we need, where do we stand, what do we need to do?
You wanted to memorialize this.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we formally approve the, uh, floor plan. As presented on page fifty-four, fifty-three of our agenda.
Right.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll leave a favor signal by saying aye, aye, all those are favors like sign. Vote for here.
I have a few more questions, uh, in the matter. When we know, you face the proposal and then it's back.
I'm doing mine here, I started a minute. And that we have to move, I was gonna include that and. Uh, um, we should see it on.
All right, we'll move on to the new bid.
I, I guess a couple of points, and was, in the consent agenda, just for clarification, that the name of the budget for this was for formatting purposes to be. Requested to stay, it wasn't changing the numbers. Uh, on the, um, um, what we just memorializing them in a motion with the offices, I, I, I'd just like to ask for clarification. Going, going forward, we, we know with anticipated growth, we're going to need new positions at some point. I, I guess, I'd like to know what upfront, what the expectation of the board is with that, just. If we passed a, made a motion to adopt this current floor plan with these office assignments, is it now? The expectation of the board, if any office changes are made, that it be brought to the board for approval, or just, or just inform me?
I think based on the, what we adopted for, this is broken, based on our proceeding and rules that we adopted. Um, under consent, if I read correctly. Here at the, uh. You know, manager, this engine, yes, on page forty-four. I think the way I read, you could just follow there that not field was. Controversial.
That's correct.
So I, I think that follows in the discretion, you know, consent. I wanted to point around this because of the lack of education. Uh, you know, I'm trying to drive home, but. We didn't have to be here that we all upset about the process. I think something like that, you know, the person, I just call. How we can send them to find and I need to.
Yeah, it, it, it does, it just, I, I just wanted to know, because that means we're back, we're gonna, at least back in senate. Get the board's approval before any future changes are made.
Yeah, I, I think I, in, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna make, and I don't think this means. Making changes of, okay, well, you know, public works, they're gonna, they're gonna move to their, to their location, we're gonna put people in these offices. I don't think we're, we're saying that you, you've got to do that, but if you're gonna spend money and you're gonna move the configurations and, and construction, then I think we want to know about it.
It's, is, is that right?
Yeah, because it says here, I actually want to present you.
I don't want to know, I don't want to know if you're gonna, if you're gonna turn the, the finance, you know, the, the. I'll just give you an example, if we're gonna turn the finance office into an additional meeting room, or we're gonna, we're gonna put two people in the finance office, we don't need.
That's the crux of it.
No.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
That's all I want to make sure of.
But if you're, but if you're going to, you're going to reconfigure and move, you know, and, and build, you know, partitions in the finance office and we're going to. Yeah, knock out walls and spend money and reconstruct.
Yeah, I totally understand.
Okay.
I don't want to go to both angles and find out we're moving from one floor to the next. That makes sense.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all right.
That's administrative.
Yeah.
Go, Nick?
Yes, sir.
Nick? Your bid.
All right. So new business for tonight is a proposal forward, splitting the public works department. And into two departments, a public works department and a public utility department. Um, I know this has been discussed in the office for a little while, uh, I don't know if it's come before the board before. This is not unusual, and this kind of goes to what I was saying a few minutes ago about really planning for the future. And where we anticipate the town being, uh, in the next few years. We know that with the anticipated growth, both residential and commercial, that water and sewer is at the top of our minds and is a priority. To, from a capacity standpoint, to make sure that we can continue to provide that service. We know we're having to expand our plan. We know we've gotten some pushback and wanting to do that. It's, it's, I think it's setting up currently your public works director, this is my opinion, I think it's setting up your public works director to fail. By adding that extra burden as the town is going to grow. Without taking into consideration the size and scale of what that department is and what it's going to be. Uh, as we add population, you're gonna need to add more positions to provide more services. Uh, employees are looking at careers that are even more specialized. And, and the direction, if we continue on this trajectory, the water and sewer side is going to be all the prioritization of our common resources. Which means other critical services that our citizens care about are gonna get pushed to the wayside and get neglected. Not because we don't care about them, but there's always so much time in the day for the staff that we have. So those things being, you know, maintenance of our, our buildings, uh, street repairs, managing our contracts for garbage and recycling. Uh, stormwater maintenance, there, there's always so much time for our director to focus on this, so. Uh, I think now is the, the ideal time to make that change, split those things out. Uh, and it also makes sense from a fund standpoint, public works would for the most part be focused in our general fund. Uh, and we would, and I would recommend hiring a new director for public works. Uh, currently, Mr. McCorkedale is the director for all of it, uh, he would be assigned as the public utilities director and focus on water and sewer. Uh, in, in that direction. Uh, like I said, this, this does mirror what many other communities do. Uh, I think the unique thing about Silver City is we know that water sewer service today and in the past is not going to match the scale. But that's going to be in the future, and I think we need to make that change now and waiting until we grow. And then have to back in, rushing into a, a, our administration, not ideal. Uh, this also gives us ample time, um, to address, you know, any challenges we find. Um, this is gonna have to be the living, breathing process, because as we add positions, it's gonna require some, some structuring and changing as we go. Um, but I'd like to be able to reduce that span of control. Um, public works currently as, as set up is really unique when you think of the. Total number of services that's provided by people either funded or providing services in that department. I mean, you, you've got at least a dozen major functions in that department, that's an awful lot to have for one director. Uh, and, and also bringing in another director will, will give us extra areas of specialization. Uh, and other center of eyes, uh, and, and skills to help lead us in the future. You've got, uh, presented in your packet, on page fifty-five, an award card of what a proposed new department would look like. Um, listing out the names of positions and, and reporting the responsible goals. And, and like I said, this will be for a new director with existing staff. Um, that also includes on page fifty-six through fifty-nine, a job description. Uh, of that new position, as well on page sixty, you see a, a breakout of what the public utilities department would look like. So you're, you know, and looking at other departments and, and particularly larger organizations. You're seeing less emphasis on that larger paramilitary structure of a large vertical org chart. And departments are becoming much more horizontal, where you're giving employees a reduced span of control, but also more opportunity for specialization and training. Because we certainly know the, the regulations and, and legal expectations are only getting higher with these positions as well. And we want to make sure that our staff in charge have time to be annually trained and, and providing the services at, at, at a high, at a high level. We, we don't want to be a jack of all trades and a master of none.
Right, how much workload would you take on three?
I, I would say, well, I, I guess it depends on how you look at it, it's. Some days, yes, I think one of the challenges is a lot of the complaints. Always you get from citizens on what we'll call the public work side. I've got a pothole in my street, I, I, my garbage wasn't picked up, my recycling wasn't done. They're not necessarily the hardest aspects of the job, but they eat up a lot of time in an administrator's day. So I, so I certainly think, I, I, there may be days that's more than fifty percent, there's some days less, but I think that's, that's very fair, say it would be half.
That being seen, how does that reflect on you and family?
I. In, in my opinion, honestly, when you, if you were to look at other departments that are giving the scale of responsibility. Of what you're going, what you would be expecting of the current director with the growth that we're anticipating. I would think you would need to substantially increase his pay if you were to leave it like it is.
Yeah, I'm not talking about leaving it like it is. I'm talking about if you come have to work out, you do well.
Then I would, I would say his salary would be appropriate to the new responsibilities as it is right now.
Well, I did.
I, when I look at this, I thought this was, as far as splitting the services, I thought, I liked it. Because, um, as you said, there, there, there are two different things that, that's there. And the constant calling from the citizens regarding the things that affect us. Within our streets and, and all of that, I, that's, that takes a lot, but then also try to make sure that. The water and all, and all of that is taken care of, it, it kind of separates those two things. And I, I thought that it was a good thing to look at, to try to split some of that together, uh, away from each other. So that there could be that focus as well. So that was.
All right, and, and our, and our major cities in Dallas, uh, they, you know, they have a public works department, a public utilities department, and an engineering department. And, and I think that's somewhat the direction that we're gonna have to plan to go.
So how to, uh, like to split? And. If we split it up, can we? How quickly do you think it will enable us to address? Some of the works, public works issues that some of our citizens have been speaking for the time of about for a month, I'm talking to class member. Uh, those issues and then there's, then we, uh, and driving, we're paying on the bus. And we spoke about about stormwater issue, so how well?
Right.
What's the time party on the end with the dress? Those low line.
Yeah, I think that's. I would plan to move as fast as possible in getting this director position filled. Uh, I don't take, I don't anticipate it, it being a position that drags on for months. So, so my goal would be to fill it as soon as possible and work with that new director of going around and studying each of these issues. And coming back with recommendations to make some of these changes. Because stormwater is really a great example of something that's lost in the middle. It's not, it's not prioritized, because we don't have the staff dedicated to it full time. And something that, that Chris and I have discussed is, stormwater is, you know, in many agencies, it's its own department. But I, I think what would work well for us at our size, what we anticipate being is stormwater maintenance. May end up being a division of public works, and that's the, the maintenance side. Stormwater engineering is something you look at on the public utility side. So I think we need to look at more specialization to get those projects done correctly. But right now, it's kind of a hodgepodge between public works and planning, and I think we're putting best efforts forward, but. It's, it's not top of mind and it gets neglected, and it's an important service. Especially when you have more growth, you're gonna have more, more development, more impervious surface, stormwater is going to become a, a bigger challenge for us.
We have two, two more questions on that one. So the follow-up on our. furnaces point, and we'll get it with the. Appropriate. I don't want to just skip on Chris, hoping that there was a. Lost folks in the boat, uh, those. Section, but how do we determine becoming appropriate? Uh, level doing the, the, I don't see, but how do we do it?
By, by, by level, you mean?
We have other, I, I think, you know, it looks like a question, petition is.
We, we have, we have looked at salary data from our peer organizations as we do with any type of pay study. But it, it's typical that in this type of arrangement, that the public works director is a couple of grades below. The utilities director with this, but the difference being the licenses and certifications often held by the utilities director, put them a little for the higher grade.
And then final question, each of the punch. Where's my time from? Knowing we're talking two fifty-seven increase, right?
Well.
All, all the contracts come out from bounds.
I, I, I hate to say that, don't, don't look at the two fifty-seven, but that's a one-time cost, this is a recurring cost. So, you know, we had a meeting, um, last week, we made some changes and closed the position out, discussed. Moving some services to the county, I believe most of its costs can be absorbed through that change. Uh, also, uh, we have a position in, in public works at the supervisor level that has not been filled, we have some vacant positions. Uh, I won't be able to sequence this where the new director has an opportunity to come in and evaluate the structure of the department. And see if we're, we're structured like we need to be and see if we have the appropriate number of positions. Uh, I, I think between those things, there's, there's a savings there, because it's all in the same general fund.
So then.
It's tight, but I think we can do it.
So in two weeks, I think, Tina said you were going to go some fingers off of budget amendments, is that correct, Tina?
Yes, for the, for the current year.
Right.
This will be in the next year. You're not gonna get somebody in the position by.
No, no, I mean, is it possible to get some forecast of what you're saying, how do we want to get a move current position?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Oh. This is your, your real question on page fifty-five, so I'll join. I'm just curious, because I already heard you say. Public works director will be available.
Yes, sir.
Uh, let's just say on the subcategory. Distribution and collection system supervised.
Right.
Let's say he's not there, he's on vacation, he's sick or whatever, and he, and he's going down to the utility maintenance worker. Is anybody there considered like a crew leader? You know, they get called out in the middle of the night and Jonathan. You know, they get called out in the middle of the night and Jonathan's not available.
I mean, that's.
Who leaves?
I mean, I I would think that. And that's when you when you're lacking leadership there, that would fall on Bill Smith as a superintendent to make that call. But I mean, that's that's no different than. That proposal is not as different.
You know, even the street maintenance workers, either those. Is anybody in the subdivision? Or subcategories, I should call it. Is anybody considered a crew leader?
Not not at this point. I I think that's one of the things that the director needs to look at. We don't want to put ourselves in a position where we're elevating people to positions they're not, they're not ready for. And but but I want to make sure that the director is involved in making that call, whether it's more crew leaders. Whether that's breaking it out into further subcategories. You know, I I don't want to speak for someone who's not here. Yeah. But but that's, that comes with training and experience. I don't think that's why we addressed that. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I'll make sure I understand the question. Yes, sir. Well. I I think that's multi-layered. We've we've got vacant positions a- as is that we're working on trying to fill. And as you know, that's, it's hard right now to fill positions in in anything. The state's reporting three and a half percent unemployment. It kind of tells you no one's that many people out there looking for any job right now. So that's a challenge we're facing in every department is filling vacant positions. That's that's a priority. All I all I'm suggesting is, as we know, growth is coming. It may require a constant analysis of, okay, now we're nine thousand, now we're ten thousand in population. What is the appropriate structure to make sure we're covering all of these services appropriately? And that's something we need to plan for each budget year. We need to be able to forecast if we think we're going to add X number of people in the next year. How many more people is that going to require to continue to provide a quality service and make sure that's part of our budget discussion? That's, that's, that's a perfect example of, I was saying earlier that. You know, our budget process needs to change and needs to be more proactive in planning for the future. It's to address your your very question. We, we can't wait until the last three or four months of the budget year, planning next year's budget. To get a request for a new position. We need to plan that out years in advance. We need to know what we're doing in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. If we follow the growth pattern we're expecting. Not only for planning a budget, making sure that you have an appropriate rate and tax schedule to cover that cost. But also so the departments themselves can plan ahead. It's it's very difficult to just throw that on them at the end of the budget year. It's okay, you have a new position. You plan things out, it reduces tension. Departments know, heads know it to a. And I think we have a much smoother operating government. It also gives, you know, a challenge in any small town, and even when we grow, we're still going to be in that small town category. A frustration point for a lot of employees is, I've been here two or three years, I've learned, I'm growing. But feel capped out. Where do I go? Where where do I grow? And then move on to another position with another agency because they don't feel like they have any upward potential without someone else leaving. This helps because it allows us to say, as you said, Chris, here's a crew leader position we know in twenty-five we're going to add. We can tell that guy. You train, you get these certifications, we're going to add a position and you work hard, there's a spot for you. That helps recruit that guy, that helps retain that guy with our agency. Absolutely. I think it's everybody. I think it's all our responsibility to make sure that we we educate our employees as to what their opportunities are. But but I think as best we can, the the first, I just think the further you plan out into the future. The better off as an agency we're going to be. Now, in recruiting and retaining and and really expending the limited resources we have the best way possible.
If I may paraphrase what Chris often said. Because I I had this thought myself, especially in the last six months. We've added a whole lot of teeth and not a lot of engine. To put it real simple, that's sort of what you get. So, you know. Maybe we are, maybe we're not, I don't know. It just seems like we we've added several positions in the last six months, you know, and. Manager, supervisor, assistant, whatever. And I think that's what he was getting at, not that he, you know, didn't. You know. That can happen. Get too tough here.
Certainly, and and that's something we're already looking at addressing in other areas. The the challenge is always you look at with growth. You know, that's great, we're going to get more money. And that's true, but more money means more need. And it's more water, so it means more employees, means more service. So the challenge when you know growth is coming is you get caught in that position where you often have to spend money before it's in hand. And that can ruin you too, complete that limited fund balance you have. Because you're trying to spin into more money and that doesn't work either. That's all the reason why you got to have long-term forecasting to predict what's coming because. I don't think anyone in this room would debate, we need more police officers at a certain point, we need more public works employees. It's not that issue. The issue is about sequencing. What's, we've got money for three positions, what's the best three positions at this point in time? For this next year with the dollars that we have.
Great, and one thing, because I know I've heard this. From some of those members too. One thing over my team here on board, and I don't think that we as a board have really backed off. Trying to improve the salaries and benefits and everything of all of our. Our citizens or all the people that work here, trying to make the very best we could possibly do. With our pay comp studies, different things, we got, we've done a whole lot. But it it's somewhat, sometimes it's beginning to feel like, you know, because we hadn't, we hadn't backed off of any of that anywhere. But in a way, I'm not sure we're trying to provide more. I'm not sure we're getting the return that we should, because it seems like. Mr. Boone says, Mr. Bailey said well stated, that we're getting more issues coming back than we have had before. And. Paying more, I'm not sure we're getting the right amount of results back. And I'm just throwing that out there. I'm not saying we need to do anything about it, but it sort of seems that way.
I I think that's, there's a complicated answer to that question, but I I understand where you're going. The challenge, we're we're not uniquely challenged in that. I think if you really were to look at any town in North Carolina right now. Anywhere, you're going to find a common theme of a challenge finding police officers. And retaining them, a challenge finding public works employees, challenge finding any part-time employee. I think there's some common themes there. I think you've got less people looking for these positions and. Ever increasing competition from every agency to to get those people working for them. The the pay has increased for us, but it's also dramatically increased by those around us. While we've certainly, I think, been generous as an agency in increasing salaries. You know, just for example, we've seen Pittsburgh and Chad County promise substantial cost of living increases to their employees. Factor two lot one. A lot of our challenge is the region we find ourselves in. There are many areas of the state. Me just coming from one, that would be thrilled at many of the salaries that we offer employees. But it all depends on the market, you know, what what does it cost to live in that area? It is, it's very different. It it hurts us that we're, in a way, it's a benefit economically to be so close to Lake County. But it hurts us when those agencies can often pay substantially larger salaries. And an ever-movable workforce that's not tied to a job where they plan to work a career for thirty years in the same town they were born and raised. You know, that that's willing to uproot and leave at any given time to make three, four thousand dollars more a year. It's just, it's a unique challenge. I also, I think the the expectations of younger workers are are different now. And in a small town, you you have to be often all hands on deck. You have to be called upon to work over extra overtime. Extra shifts to to cover the workload. Often your millennials are very, have very high expectations of working only the hours that they were originally hired under. They won't, as they know, the earning burn mindset, you know, I earned some time, I'm going to take my time. And I think every agency is going to have to adapt to that new expectation. It's just an an added challenge in a small town because we don't have the backfield of personnel to to always cover that.
Because we are doing everything we can to keep up the salaries and people still leave, we still have a pension machine. And it's not just salaries. And not just benefits. In my experience, people are unhappy for whatever reason, and they start looking at the talenting of their employment. They look at what they're making, obviously, but they also look at their benefits. They look at how far they have to drive. Every single aspect of it, and whereas someone doing. This, again, this is my observation, people. Happy. Might not look at the plan B. If you're unhappy. Then you start analyzing everything about your plan A and say, ooh, maybe this time you're going to be. So I I think, you know, we just. Yes, we have a hiring problem, but we also have a pension problem. It's got to be, when you, when you keep up and do as much work as we have. You do comp studies and fight compression and get good benefits. The only conclusion left is that there's another factor that we're missing. If you, if you've excluded everything else, then what remains is the ring answer. There's got to be something besides salaries that we need. We work our butts off on those, on those, on those studies and keeping up with it and fighting compression, we want to work ourself on that. When I say we, I mean, forward, I mean. Staff as a whole, who are hard on that. And I'm looking at street banks, three vacancies. That's not even. That's just going to earn a charge.
On the front of the boat, that's here in the force. My feeling, my thought, you know, I think it's a great decision, as Mr. Boone. Has stated that two things probably need to be. And that, I think that's a problem bit. The part I'm not entirely sold on, I would be, I would like to see some. Figures. What the, what the total outlay is going to be, where it's coming from, all that, you know, and a little bit more, we talked about it in general. I'd like to see a little bit more refined process on that. I'm not saying I'm against it. I want, like you said, right now, we might move some stuff around and we can handle, you know, for the time being. But going forward, year after year after year, what's that going to do to our budget? How's that going to interact? We need to talk about that because that can have a big impact. Especially if we already know, we've got the two seventies coming up. Talking about a director position, what seventy-five to ninety-five for the category.
I would, I would never often establish a position that wasn't going to be. Premature nuclear for us that we saw were going to run in the red on. I would just say, I know there are cost savings. I I would hate to mix categories. Personnel costs are always recurring costs. What I'm saying is, we, there is a personnel savings that will mirror the personnel cost to add this position. I I would not have proposed it to you tonight if I couldn't do that. Or I would, or I would have proposed to you a way we're going to have to come up with the money. Yes, sir.
I'd like to see the crunch. Not, not, not just, but. I don't, not only blind side, when we sit down in November. Or December and start coming up, and all of a sudden we get this gap.
When you do the forecast analysis. I did like the separation of as, as Mr. Boone stated, but we do have to. Figure out the money side, how we're going to accomplish this. And so when we do a forecast of, of the. How we're going to do it, is there a way we can look at? The detriment? If we don't do it, in addition, look at the benefit. Your cost analysis. What are we looking at if we keep staying versus what are we looking at if we switch it up? I'm trying. Or is that, is that your data?
I I, well, I think it's hard, it's easy to list out. I can list them for you now, but I think it's hard to quantify that because. As far as a dollar, because a lot of what you're asking for are qualitative measures. Because you're looking at. Yeah, I I I think, because what you're going to get is, public works director has the time to come in and assess future needs. Where we don't have the time to do that. There's potential cost savings there. What those savings are, that depends on what the recommendation is going forward. And I, so it's hard to, you're forecasting forecasts at some point, that it's awfully difficult.
So, um, I'm, I'm going to sort of, I I agree, I I think, I think the change needs to be made. I think one of the things that I kind of wanted to say to the board though, I think that we're also starting to get a little bit out of, over our skis here. You know, if 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 we, we hire a manager. And he's making a decision about his personnel. And we've given him a budget, we've approved a budget, it's up to him to operate within that budget. How he chooses to do that, I think is up to him.
Yeah, that's, that's again, so. What does the board want to do?
See, that's the direction.
I can't create a position, well, I can't create a a new position. You know, you're, you're effectively eliminating a position and creating two new ones in a way. And so I can, I can fill positions, I can advertise them. I can work within the range of salary and offering a position, but only the board can create a new position.
Well, when my question was going to be, when you say you seek direction. Are you just seeking consensus, like, do you like to plan and move forward and bring and come back to this with more details? Or do you want something more concrete and look forward to help you succeed?
I mean, my preference would be an endorsement of what's been presented tonight. We roll forward with these two new positions and I post a job ad tomorrow. But if the board feels it needs more information to feel comfortable, then I have no problem putting that together.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we separate the two positions into public works and the public utilities directors. To further enhance the services for the town itself.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second, any further discussion about that? All right, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed, like sign. So that part of that, that part.
So I'm making a motion that we authorize the manager to. Advertise. New positions as needed to effectuate the separation plan that we just heard.
Got a second. Is there any discussion about this part of the motion? And all those in favor say aye. All of the opposed, like, sign. Motion. Oh. Been here too long. Get pressure bedtime, you dang. Wait a minute, any of y'all didn't thank Brian? Anybody? All right, drive home.
Uh, man, you're the board.
We've been here a while, I'll try and keep it brief. Uh, that, that met has asked it, uh, passed along that um we're having large development projects, making next steps after pre-development meetings, it's including uh conditional zoning apps, traffic impact analysis, in sewer questions, and concept design preparation. Uh Jennifer is gonna send out an email uh soon to y'all, it's gonna address board training um and opportunities for additional training for board members, and I think will be helpful, and I encourage you to participate in those. Um we have started the interview process for the Assistant Finance Director position, um that's continuing. So I'm hoping that in the next couple of weeks, we can make a final selection on that and move forward there. So that's, that's encouraging. Uh Commissioner Bailey approached me last week about looking at potentially contracting out some of our different maintenance services. Uh ultimately, I would like to talk to a Public Works Director and get his participation in that. But ahead of that, I'll talk with the, our Parks Direct Director, Jack Cullen, and Mr. Borcavale about looking at those things and getting some quotes for some options there, so at least get the ball rolling and having that conversation. Yes, sir. Well, we, we had a meeting uh with Mount Air um regarding our current situation with, with uh capacity. That meeting was productive, uh not a whole lot of information to share, it just uh it's a ball moved forward, uh to say that, gave, gave both parties a, a chance to kind of clear the air. And uh I think further discussions will uh will happen, but now at least we have an opportunity to go back to the state and share that, that conversation's taking place. Again, I'd like to thank the board for, for last week's meeting regarding the Police Department. Uh I think this changes that the, that the board has adopted and um received well by the department, and will go a long ways in helping us recruit and retain uh the employees that we have, and ultimately improve service we're providing to the public. Thanks again. Uh Parks and Recreation uh has just started re- uh registration for Kickball, and that will run until July twenty-second. Know anybody who may be interested in participating? And the wonderful pool that we offer our, our citizens out at Bray Park is now open, open this past holiday weekend, and will continue to remain open until Labor Day.
What is?
That's it, Mayor.
You gonna throw our best timeline?
I can't.
It's in there.
Yeah. So, um, the, the mayor asked that this timeline be included, um, I guess in regard to some of the other issues that, that I guess I've walked into. Uh maybe lack of clarification on a variety of issues, including the, the town hall layout, uh this was one of them, is how, that the timeline occurred when the clerk was rehired. So, um, it's a very quick process, and I, I tried to be, you know, quickly to the point in addressing that. Um Ms. Johnson called me, expressing interest in returning to the town, wanted to know if that was something that I was open to, um. And my response was absolutely based on her um high level of qualifications and experience with the town, it was no no thought, um really, and, and not agreeing to that. Uh that's a very difficult position to fill, particularly with the level of experience that, that she has. I think if we uh were to have hired somebody else, we would look at a significant training period and probably probably at least two positions to match the level of, of comparable service being provided. Uh I, I think that's, that's easy to deal with, to say. Um I spoke with Mr. Zell, the Inter Manager. Uh he asked me what were my intentions, what I wanted to do, because uh he, he, his view was if we, if I had something, I wanted to rehire Jennifer, that he had no problem signing off on it, because this is before I began my employment. So he, you know, I, I said that it was something that I would want done following the position, so he agreed to go ahead and finalize that process and, and make that hiring offer. So Bill then instructed the, the HR Director to compile the necessary paperwork and complete it. And then the next day, which was May the fourth, uh Ms. Johnson resumed her, her duties in the position. Uh not the ideal way that you typically would like to fill a position under those circumstances. Uh you had an interim town manager, you had a new town manager coming in in very short succession. Uh you had a high-level position, but someone who'd only been gone for seven days. So it wasn't like you needed to start an entire search process over. I think it would have been very difficult to justify that under those circumstances. And, and we have no backup in that area. We don't have a deputy town clerk. We don't have anyone else who's gone to, through the clerk certification. Um we would struggle, honestly, if, if the staff had to find a way to fill in those duties even till a clerk could be hired. And even then, you're looking at a very long process, an expensive process for the school government of training and certifying that person. So the, I was in the best interest of the town, and, and Mr. Zell agreed to eliminate that, that stockgap and im- immediately make that decision. Uh so the town didn't suffer as a result, because I believe the town would have if we had let that position vacant when we had a very viable option on the table.
All right, well, I need to add some information to your timeline, if you're probably not aware of.
Yes, sir.
All right. He used to make it third, about three thirty, four o'clock in the afternoon. Previous interim town manager called me at home and wanted to know if I had any objections behind Jennifer back, the previous town clerk. And at that particular time, I said, no. It's been about an hour, thirty minutes, an hour, I called him back.
I think we're threading real close to the line on, um talking about individual personnel, not just the I, I think it would be a safe move at this point and justified.
What's the stat?
One forty-three, that's three eighteen point eleven A six.
One forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A six.
All those in favor say aye. All right. Yeah, I agree with that. Okay.